But.
Good evening, welcome to the April four, five and plan is more than even. Um, Jake and Paul Ross, please.
Aaron Robinson.
Here.
Philip Pack. Ann Raider.
Here.
I'm Ron Dallow.
Here.
Joe Franco.
Present.
Homer Urban. Donald Patch. Philip P.
Okay, just the brief announcement, we have a forum of four for board of seven, John correctly, if I'm wrong. All approvals have to be unanimous.
Exactly.
Four members, yeah, so anybody that doesn't want to be heard tonight is welcome to adjourn. Um, we will hear everyone, um, you can make that decision later on, but um, just wanna be, make you aware that that's the situation. Unfortunately, we've used up our two alternates, we have no one coming who's in the audience. Um, but. Until, until the board, the town board appoints her, um, we're running with just seven, so sorry about that. Um, that's the way it is, so, um.
Prolement, okay, um, just to clarify that the, while the town board has appointed. Former alternate Don Paff, the planning board that has not made any statement. As to, um, reflect him becoming a regular member of the planning board.
So, yeah, we made the recommendation, so we will accept, uh, Donald as a member. Yes, we will accept him as a full-lit member. Hopefully.
They show up soon.
Okay, so, um, correspondents?
Um. There was a training that was going to be today with Nan, um, that had to be rescheduled because of weather and. The desire to have that training, uh, inducted in person. So I have reached out to Nan, I have also reached out to zoning enforcement officer, Ed Ferrado. Um, Aaron and Joe and. Following confirmation with Nan, that training will be scheduled for May second at five P M. The planning board has also received a letter from the Columbia County Planning Board regarding the. Center for the. Anchorm Center for the Arts Annex Proposal. I spoke briefly with Patrice Perry of the Columbia County Planning Board to clarify. What the referral process would be when both the G D A's and the planning board had an application.
Okay, um, I'm gonna take. Uh, one item out of order on the agenda, I know we have an anchorm opera house public hearing. That will be second, I'm gonna take Green Hill first because our town attorney. Insulting John Lyons is here to assist us with the application.
Okay, good, 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 people like this came and you want to really go over the four person board again, for the other side.
Sure, I, briefly, we only have a four-member board, um, which constitutes a farm. But any application that voted on has to be unanimous, otherwise it's considered a denial. With that, um, Green Hill subdivision.
Well, I'm here, but we were second on the agenda, so I don't see Andy yet. So if you have technical questions, wait for Andy. Um, otherwise, I could start us off with. Kind of a quick review, you have Andy's letter, the new map, you had your engineer's, uh, letter. Um, basically agreeing with almost all that was in Andy's, um, opinion. The discrepancies, oh, here he is. Just starting it, the discrepancies were rather minor, I'd rather have Andy discuss. Um, the comments that were added, um, and I will only ask that. That you allow me to repeat that I said last time. What you're approving is simply the plan. Anyone who develops, anyone who builds on that property has to come back here, so you're getting another bite to the apple. I didn't feel that your engineer's letter warranted anything that needs to be changed and not give us approval tonight, and if. Someone decides to build in any of the areas that he has pointed out with the potential changes that may occur, that at that time, that can be looked at. Because we have no idea where those houses will be, but I'll let Andy go through the technical.
You started the engineer, you're speaking of Eric.
Hudson, yeah, yes, uh, thank you.
So since the last time we were here, we did make one modification to the plan. Which was to adjust the driveway for lot two, so the spring is here with the concrete spring. Um, that comes and disappears into, into the slope there, we shifted that driveway, it used to loop around it, we were able to easily make a modification to pull that. Upslope of it, and it's about seventy feet from. That existing spring. And I think to Mitch's point, obviously, again, we're just seeking the subdivision. Um, and in my. Opinion, the Hudsonia report basically pointed to the fact that when you've got wet areas, it can be, it, it could potentially in some. Instance have ecological value. But didn't point to the fact that any of the, these had ecological, ecological value, obviously, it's been mowed, but there's no. Abundance of wetland vegetation or signs of significant ecological resource or hydrologic. Resource, because they all just dissipate into the slope, you know, a hundred feet down slope.
Um, John, would you like to do us your take on how we should be handling this?
Yes, um, so you have the report from Hudsonia, under the law. The process we follow, just to sort of refresh your recollection, is that. Uh, the applicant had to identify the locations of the steeps and springs and then. Uh, also, uh, make a submission about the significance of those, which Mr. Didio did. We took a copy of his report, sent it to Eric Kivya at Hudsonia. Eric reviewed the report, he also went out on the site and inspected the springs and seeps with Mr. Didio present. And then he, uh, Eric, uh, prepared the report for you that we circulated yesterday. Um, I apologize for not getting into you sooner, but it was the soonest Eric could get it done after he was out at the site. So there's, Eric's report speaks for itself, it does discuss, uh, there is. Uh, value to the wet areas and he explains the detail in terms of ecology for those. Um, the decision that's in front of the board now is twofold, one is to determine whether those, um. Springs and seeps are significant ecologically. And if so, whether anything further beyond the relocation of the driveway needs to be done to protect those. Resources, and that's a decision.
Third question. Actually, a lot of it.
Let me just take a look, yeah.
Biopolitics.
Yeah, the word hi is used in that section. As the experts, it's the intent of the town of Vancouver. Springs and seeps are high by the geological and ecological.
And Derek's report does not deal with the waters that are.
Well, yeah, I agree.
He's all those with the plants and the, and the biological significance on the surface.
I tried to look at this, I read through everything and I, and I looked at the criteria that they were using for. Sort of making it, uh, I see with against one of the size, that's all it is kind of small. Hydrology, I, I did not determine what you're saying, because there's nothing that says where the water is coming from. Anywhere, how deep it is or how swollen. Uh. Like, yeah, like, well, sorry, I saw it as small. It's seasonal, it's, it's probably the wettest time of year right now, the wettest year, yeah, the wettest year, but I don't probably drive. Uh, the water source is not, it's supposed to hardly know, but I can tell when it's not supplying in a deflector operation and. And sorry, it's not affecting other properties. So I'm just laying out pretty much how I was looking at this. If I'm missing something, no, certainly not. And that might be, you know, guide for us, my business.
Well, in Eric's report. He said that seems the most useful of his interest to assume that activities affecting soil, you know, for any water. Directly upslope or close to the size of the discharge would affect them quantity and quality of the discharge in groundwater.
Yeah, I'm not saying, it would go to something, yeah, going back to the part that said hi. And the other, and the other, he did indicate on lot three, the, the problem about the location of the field, it was. That's easy to get one.
That makes both, sure.
He has, it was, uh, it's subject to the water area, probably. And that's kind of the only area, so that. Right, because your seat here, so I think so, we're here, so, you know, the, the flow direction. But, yeah, so it'd be down slow, so it'd be off to the side, it's not going down into it, per se. It was, yeah. On the.
Down, or nothing, but, no. It's there.
Yeah, so it's just the. Okay, that's, yeah, that's that big, and it's really, so it, it's a very similar seat to this area, but the tractor got in there, mucked it all up, so it kind of meandered through all the tractor spots. So this was surveyed in at the big wet spot, but they basically one point source of it, it was in the. Uh, and then it just had, because they, they saw the tractor and had to pull it out, so now it's all dug up and brought it up, and then it's going to be solid ground, so that's. Be creating a bigger problem, so the, the, the setting has to be, uh, slow, less than fifteen percent. Um, and then you also go down the west side of the area, even though we got. So this is really the ideal slot because it's the flattest area. And again, the, the flow has not going this way to, it's parallel, but they're perfectly good. It actually would go this way, away. And that setback is a hundred feet. What's on this set back? They think, um, yeah, I mean, ultimately perpendicular to the contour, so you're gonna see that, that will start to go in this direction, underground, it's, it's seeping into that whole point, it's a big difference. Um, and then your distance between the septic and that spring by a hundred fifty. So they're similar, but essentially in the part of it is longer for separation from. There's gonna be an estimate of seven, so.
It's like, did you function of the set?
Mm-hmm.
No, for it, definitely.
Right, so whether or not they have an impact, which again, it's, these are flowing perpendicular to the contour and awakening.
Going downhill, it all flows downhill, yeah.
But again, reiterate, we're just seeking subdivision.
Right. I'm gonna ask a question about that, and, and that's, I think, the biggest thing here that seems to be the issue. Is that what's shown on this plan. Then everybody's saying, well, the next people who purchase this, who do want to build on this, will have to come before us, but. Are they coming to us with a plan that's approved and they say, well, this is where we want to put. The driveway, this is where, uh, per your plan.
What's approved will be the lot lines, that's what you're.
So, right, so we have no obligation to follow. This, and or the applicant would have no right to say we have to.
I think, Andy, did you put a note on the, is there a note on the map that says that abbreviated site plan approval?
Yeah, it's on the survey.
Yeah, so the map will be filed and purchasers of the property would be put on notice that. Uh, additional approvals necessary in order to build on these lots. I'd have to refresh my recollection by looking at Mr. Didio's map note, but. Yeah, that was the idea, is to be able to, anybody who's gonna purchase those lots, most anybody is going to do a title search. And the filed subdivision map will come up in the title search, and so the map notes on that map will be scrutinized or should be scrutinized by. Purchasers and their attorneys, and will put them on notice that additional approvals required.
And John, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it might be note fourteen in the survey you're holding. Okay, that note, yeah, it's somewhere in.
And Eric, we don't have probably the note, language is approved months ago, if you want to add that to the approval tonight, we have no problem with that. Be very, very clear. Just more.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like that idea that, that's folks.
Yeah, uh, no problem, because that's the law.
That there is an.
It's not trying to skirt that, so I, we have zero reservation about doing it.
It's in your zone, so they have. Yeah, you can be very sensitive. I mean, this isn't.
Now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
And to remain, the, the whole remaining, the other portion on the opposite side of the road, that this is getting killed off is going to stay a biodynamic farm.
Andy, can you talk about the separation distances?
For now, but under current order.
Can you talk about the separation distances on the revised map?
Yeah, so the, um, right now, on lot two, we have all the separations shown, so the driveway sixty feet from the seep on lot two.
So, the driveway with the area disturbance.
That's what we're pointing to, area disturbance.
That grading, one grading.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so sixty feet from that, seventy-one feet from the spring, and then. Uh, twenty-five feet for the existing septic laterally, again, not up, upslope and flowing down into it, it's laterally to it, um. So it's flowing in that part of overburden aqua berg that all rainwater runs through.
But is it, your opinion that those locations for those leak fields that you're showing would be. The location based on your soil tests and, you know, the per test and things like that, and like, it was the slope.
Yeah, according to Department of Health, they're suitable locations for something, correct? I mean, that, somebody could, could try and change them, you know, Eric had mentioned, he, he wasn't sure why the septics were so far away, again, it comes down to that fifteen percent slope. So we wanted to get down into where it plateaued out. Um, and again, a hundred and fifty feet from the spring is the one septic, seventy feet for the driveway.
Yeah, pipe is cheap.
Exactly.
So, th- is, this plan that would get revised, whether it has that, no?
This plan was just to show conceptual, conceptual driveways, house locations, we could have stuck a house right here and put a little spur driveway in that met the setbacks. Same for this lot, same for this lot, pump up to avoid it all of this, that's why I'm really trying to stress the fact that. This is the concept plans, what the applicant wanted to show. Ultimately, you're just approving lot lines, you've got, and we were considering potentially abbreviated site plan review, but we just try and expedite things, we said, okay, we'll, we'll deal with that down the line. We don't want to have to deal with abbreviated site plan for everything, it's all subject to a second bite of the apple.
The driveways are gonna have to get approved by the fire department.
Yeah, yeah, this is the great.
Okay, John, this is, uh.
So that.
Okay, um, Ben.
They're not, I mean, if that's not the plan, I mean, I, because I just saw like this colder. Called out. On that middle lot. Can't see it from here, but inside on the other plan.
Existing spring, oh.
Was that from the.
I think that's a carryover from, yeah, from the other, where the driveway actually was, I think that's, that still lives on Dan's survey, so I've got to have them pull that off. And then we'll get you an updated seal. There.
Okay.
Dan, any question?
No.
John, um. When we last visited this, we closed the public hearing. Um, voted, and then we went out and did the cycle, so how do we make this all nice and legal?
Well, I think that, uh, the first question is that if you think that the subdivision configuration can remain the same. With the information that you have here, then you are in a position to approve the subdivision, um, this evening. Um, the condit, the condition about the seeps and springs that was attached to the conditional approval having been satisfied. Um, and then you need to be specific with the applicant about. As, you know, um, what map notes and what, uh, indications you want to have on the filed subdivision map. Um, you know, as, that you're expecting to have on there as part of the approval. It's not a conditional approval, but you would say, you know, to the applicant, uh, place these notes on the map, submit the map, and then it can be, um, signed by the board.
So my only other thought about this. Seeds is, I'm gonna show the wetland buffer, you were showing the buffer mine on there, and if we're. Um, going to establish. Um, a dimension. And have you put that on thing that, you know, I mean, that it is a season that we're. Calling out that buffer zone, that area of no disturbance around. Or to be billed delineated at a.
Wouldn't that be covered when they came back, uh, to the viewer disturbance? They'd have to meet the requirement.
Everything that's on the plan to help people understand later what's on their plan and what pitfalls they might run into. That a lot of times folks go through a lot of design before they come here. And it helps them to understand, and, and one of the things about a site plan is you're supposed to list all the natural resources on the plan. It's me that. If there's a buffer that goes along with that, it should be on the plan, like the hundred and fifty foot stream buffer is on the plan. Let's everybody know.
You're saying there's no buffers from around the sea. It's twenty-five by default.
By default, unless we felt that, and that's what this whole study was about, whether we felt that it warrants a larger buffer.
And I guess that's the question to ask yourselves, is there anything in the report that you feel is almost significant or not so warrant, but increased buffer than what design goes?
And for me, that's what it came back to, whether these were high significance, and I assume these is leading that far.
I'm not sure we can actually make, that's still determination without understanding. Subsurface waters.
Yeah, the only problem with that, Aaron, is that practically speaking, that's really hard to do.
Yeah.
And really expensive.
So that makes me feel like.
I think that, um. I think that. The, the, the information that Hudsonia brought. Um, forward, I think would really dictate how far the board would want to go with regard to trying to figure out, you know, hydrogeology, because. It's, it's a hard thing to do, and.
That will happen, we're gonna have to send has well, that's the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Somebody else comes, that would be requiring.
Well, the next one is an abbreviated site plan review too, so it's not a, um, a full in-depth review that we're gonna have a chance.
But I want to just get back to the point that you were making, that I, I think there is, this is just my suggestion to you, okay, it's not a legal requirement. But I think that, given that the folks that come in for abbreviated site plan review may not be this applicant. I think that it, the more information that can be put on the filed subdivision plat map that. Uh, I mean, that's gonna be the canvas on which any abbreviated site plan review is gonna take place, and. And as you were saying, that's gonna put people who are purchasers of these lots, it just puts them on notice of what's there. And I think, uh, I think the boards would be comfortable with that, so, you know, you can discuss it with the applicant, but I think it's a good idea.
Maybe we can add the twenty-five foot buffer note, that's your existing zone.
Right, and.
And can the buffer be drawn onto the, onto the plat?
The only reason why I would want to avoid that is lot three. Because of the condition that's in, and Eric even addresses it in his report about the regrading of that area, because right now it's been so ratted up. That it presents as this huge, where it actually. Emerges from subsurface at literally a point, like the size of my boot, so that would be my only, I think, a blanket. Um, statement that, that again, puts the prospective purchasers on notice that there's a twenty-five foot buffer against. From a seep, whatever condition that seep is in at the time of purchasing construction and abbreviated site plan review, what they would be helpful. And frankly, should be that, that area where a lot three should get cleaned up for Eric's.
But would it be appropriate to say that because. They've changed or they changed, um, you know, because of the conditions, that, um. Um, that the buffer, um, should be based on the field of elimination in that.
I mean, that, that's the other thing, is being, similar to the hydrogeologic significance, doing a hydrogeologic study, delineating a seep is kind of. It can depend on the season, I could go in the middle of July and, and go, it's right here.
That's why we want it bigger, to protect it more, what it does.
Well, yeah, and it's, it, it, the, the source point doesn't change, it's just, you know, it kind of meanders, but then again, all three of these conditions, they seep right back into the ground. It's just, how wide is that, it's, is it fifty feet now and ten feet in, in the heat of the summer? Um. Well, the minor reference, obviously, would be to just reiterate what the existing zoning says on the subdivision plat, so that the prospective purchaser has that, they're notified that, okay, I've got a buffer, I've got to work within. Regarding the springs and seep.
Will, will the existing owner have upgraded that now?
Um, yes, I, I could talk to him about it, I think obviously we'd want to wait until it's.
Dries out, yes, yes, yes.
I, I think both he and the existing, um, farmer who, who uses that field would want to tune that up.
Yeah, kind of wait for it to dry out.
I mean, we, we wouldn't want it to be a condition, but I think as a matter of course, he's probably gonna get it tuned up anyways, just for presentability of the lot, so.
All right, um.
So, look, can I ask you a question, so I, I, my ideal for this. Is, uh, would really to be for the, um, planning for the issue or written decision. Mitch, is that gonna be an issue for your client, Andy's got to do, um.
I mean, we, it's not like we have a laundry list of conditions that we gotta do with a bunch of whereas's, it's like, add a note to the plan and pull the one called it off.
Well, the, the, let me tell you, the oral approval in September didn't work out great. And I want to avoid any kind of uncertainty, especially if we're talking about language on the, on the. On that. Um, so to answer your question, John, this has been laid. Oh, yeah, I know all that, I'm just asking.
That's, that's my answer.
Just answer, asking whether we can, you know, go to the main meeting and have a written decision then, that's what the question.
Obviously, our preference would be no, again, I don't think we're reinventing the wheel here, it would be an approval conditioned upon the cover being, and Aaron cover being shown on lot two. And the fact that the note regarding the twenty-five foot buffer to springs and seeps be added to the plan. And that covers it. And that covers it, it's been. At this point, I don't I don't think you can immortalize it anymore, yeah, and that'll be in your minutes and when Joe gets. From Andy, Andy gonna point out those two notes there. I think it's just an unnecessary delay, it's really.
Well, it's a delay.
Explain to write the letter and how long does it take to write a letter and get that approved, I mean, that has to.
Next month. You start about the next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't.
I'm satisfied with that.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's hard for me not to follow the trends.
You wanna follow mine now? It's really such a, it's everything, I mean, I I've been sixteen years, I get not the eyes across from you, T, so I really do, and we're in a situation as John pointed out. Cause we we didn't do that properly before, but it really cost us, we're now six months later from from the October meeting. Uh, and again, it's so minute, we just talked about the two things that will be there, the chair knows what they what what they are, Andy will point them out, if they're not, they won't sign. He's refused to sign before, I mean, I know he's more than capable of it.
So if we come up with, if we can get the language, the concern that I have is I just wanna have something down on paper that so we're all playing. From the same sheet music going forward. We come up with a a list of conditions. Uh. Would it be all right with the board and would it be all right with you if? Kim and I tried to work on uh let you go ahead with your other business.
Yeah.
And we'll try to work on a resolution and see if we can have something for you that will both be. In writing that satisfies my concerns and that. You can vote on tonight and then the time element will be satisfied.
That's great, thank you compromise.
Alright, so can so can we, since we're gonna have to write this down? Can you share with me exactly what additional note, Andy, I've read this. I don't think this this is fourteen, I don't know that that really says they have to, I'd like to have something on there that's saying that they're gonna come back for.
Uh, early town of Ankrum zoning code, any puzzle within five hundred feet of an active farm abbreviated site plan review, which is applicable.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said fourteen, I thought thirteen, okay. Um. So if you can tell me exactly what the. Conditions are that have to be added to the map, the ones that are not on here right now. Then we can um.
Well, yeah, I know that, why did we have one of those twenty five six? The upper around like that. Yeah, and we can call up the the zoning code section, so it would be whatever section that is that talks about the twenty five foot. Setback, um, just. No ground disturbance shall be. Shall be uh conducted within twenty five feet of a of an identified spring or sea. Per zoning section blinded. And then the only other thing isn't a condition, there's an errant over from the previous plan that had the driveway going around the spring. Now it's to the north side of it, but that cover is still on subdivision plat.
That's for lot two, correct?
Yeah, that's for lot two.
So so it's. You're removing the one that's by the driveway and you're moving it north, that I didn't see the what the new map.
Um, there's, it's where the old driveway route went where that spring came out, we had to put a put a cover under the driveway to convey that spring to its where it currently goes. The driveway has since been moved, but the surveyor didn't pull that culvert note off saying proposed culvert there. So I can actually, if you've got it right here.
Okay. Okay, so that's. And no other.
I mean, there'll be culvert, probably culvert.
But you're moving in the future, yeah.
Okay. Um, we're gonna just hold this till later. To finish. Like to go back to the first item on the agenda, Ankrum Opera House annex. Who's here first?
Those are time, they'll be time.
Okay, so that those are the only two things, the ground disturbance and the culvert.
And and.
The abbreviated, the way it's abbreviated, it's on there, the seats and culvert. There should be three, what was it, last one? The the abbreviated site plan, no thirteen, you said, that was on there already. And then uh. The references each and spring is the zoning code. And the culprit.
Okay. Is there a place where we can go, Joe and Dave?
I will eventually commence.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we'll see you.
Thank you.
Opera House.
Hi, there.
Hello.
Sorry. Uh, thank you, Senator, for the, that's our new date, thank you. So, right, so today's our public hearing, I guess, regarding our special use permit.
Make a motion to open the year.
On favor.
I.
Okay, so the public hearing is open. So we're gonna um give this a brief overview.
Sure. So we are here uh seeking a special use permit for. A a new use for the property at thirteen twenty six County Route seven, which is located right next to the Ankrum Opera House. It's currently a single family residence and we wish to convert it into a mixed use property that will provide intern and uh uh intern and artist housing. That will be done in a three bedroom, two bath house. That's connected to a a sort of a multipurpose community room in which we're gonna offer, we offer a full array of classes. Uh, for free to the community of playwriting, songwriting and acting theater related stuff. So um. It's a unique sort of situation for Ankrum, we're sort of like the first and only one uh organization doing this kind of work, so. Um. Been consulted and consultation with, I guess, the towns. Any consultant. Uh, the use that was determined to be the best fit. Other than the category of performing arts school, boarding school, so it allowed for the housing piece as well as for the instructional piece. So um. That's sort of the overview of what we're trying to do um with the building, you've seen the, we have presented all the drawings. Uh, we talked about parking, we talked about. Uh, um, the subject, the various elements to that project, so I guess if there are questions about it or. Additional comments.
Yeah, anybody in the public have any? Comments, concerns?
We've discussed signage.
We have not discussed signage because we don't know about signage yet, so we I'm assuming we would come back.
That's what we discussed.
Maybe to say that, yeah, so we would come back once we've made a a design plan for.
Yeah, is there anybody on Zoom that? Uh, no. There are no, seeing no one. Last chance, anybody have a comment, concern? I get a motion to close the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
On favor.
I.
Actually, the public hearing is closed. So you've been to the zoning board to grant area variant.
And those have happened, those were approved.
Okay, you have a drawing, or Jay, do we have a drawing?
Um, well, I do have drawings, I. Was under the impression that the applicant was going to. Get a map, knows that the area variance was approved. Um, and I don't think you passed.
Well, we got that communication yesterday, so we don't have.
I believe that communication was needed in September, January.
Wait, I'm sorry, I don't understand, but.
I, well, you heard the property.
What was the last statement, what was granted? I'll bring the from the variances, yeah. Um. The setbacks, uh, um. Well, basically, I have that. This this little porch is, the the porch is reduced in size, okay, so it applies to property, okay.
With that only line.
It does not, it does not cross the line, the setbacks are approved, where this this setback, well, this is the existing setback. That we have already to see, was this this porch, okay. From the front. And from the side.
Those would be too bad.
Those would be too bad. Everybody.
Yeah, um. I don't, I don't have that piece of paperwork, they're putting it on the plan.
On the right side, on the right side, yeah, that that front yard and side yard, so the variances, they were granted, I guess. I'm guessing that's an open.
Uh, yes. Well, it's sort of two, there's um. Partially, it's a. Yeah.
Okay, so we need to get a revised plan. To show what.
Well, the setback, the setback is the setback, it's the porch is the porch, um, and that setback was approved from the side.
Right.
Yeah, we have the stamp or plan in this.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's correct.
That's it, yeah, the the full set had to be current. So show the extent of what they approved, because even though it's the setback, it was roof to run roof. I mean, the difference, so there's no confusion then. Okay, somebody gets the wrong plan. You have an issue. Any other questions?
I'm not quite sure I understand, the the dimensions are on one here. I mean, isn't it just a note that this plan was approved? But what do you?
Yeah, that should, yes, that should be. Also added that this plan was approved, but it's a question of the extent of the roof. You're saying the roof is not exactly what's shown here. You just wanna get a corrected, you know, instead of drawing, so that.
Well, this is different about the.
Pardon, some of this is covered, some of it isn't, I think.
I thought you meant the ramp was not covered.
The ramp is not covered. Right, it's a whole.
The whole other part is.
The whole deck is covered, isn't it?
That's what it's showing on here, so the side elevation, it shows it up, so that's.
Yeah, that. You have to cover that. This is the enough. That move cannot cover that entire.
Well, that's what is on the plan. Right here. And then up here.
Yeah, the deck is much bigger than that. Such construction.
The deck is. They get them back.
Right.
Oh, yeah, it's a patio.
Patio or gym. Patio or deck, it's a wooden deck. Wooden deck, we think.
So here.
Right, yeah.
Covered that. And then it's a patio.
You're saying, well, that's that's.
The visit's not a debt.
I mean, well, no, it's it's um.
It's wood?
It's wood, it's constructed.
So that shouldn't say that.
Isn't that sad, honey?
No.
No, that's not.
And that's what the, that's what the site.
Yeah, so, and it is like giving that award that's.
You hear it, they're looking at that alone.
Okay, there they go. Um.
Alright, so there's a letter from CCPB, probably found on the board.
So this is the floor plan that we're moving on. Well, do they approve this plan? So that's the thing, like, so they don't have a process where they. They have the plan, they just, they have a good plan, do they refer to this plan in this day? But that's, it needs to refer to something.
We should. We should refer.
Yeah. It needs some kind of a. Mention of what it is.
Uh, that's the letter from. On you can.
Yeah. Do you have copy?
Um, hey, we left that that one there.
Uh, yeah, it's on the ground box.
Okay, what is, is there anything that we should be?
Uh, I mean, if if you might, if I was interested, if you're addressing me or chat. Yeah, so basically, it um. Just spoke to issues that we've already discussed. Uh, asking that that perhaps. Uh. Uh, that the suggestion, uh, location online while in separate systems for this part will be delineated and be delineated at site plan, and I do believe that is in the site plan. Uh, it mentions. The uh that uh the applicant provide information on the location of any proposed parking for this use. Which we did discuss a bit at the last meeting. And then and then the third item was about signage, which we just mentioned, saying we're gonna come back.
Well, there's nothing there of any significance that's we have to deal with. Um, maybe else. Okay, what's your recommendation for us going forward with this?
Um, so we for the site plan to be updated to. Reflect that the variant variance was granted. As well as any of the. There are the notes. Taken in the. All the accounting planning board letter. Um, if the plan is so decided.
Good. So, I need you to get that done. Back next month, it'll be a short, brief, and we'll. We'll get final approval.
Okay, alright, thank you, thank you. I'm I'm okay waiting, okay. That's it. You guys.
Um, so.
No, it's not for head, that's just. And all patio was a different patio, it's big and on ground, so you wanna do that, I'll put it. Yeah, you can take these. For just for a moment there.
Alright, uh, going for. Falling? You went here for home?
Hello? I'll say. Uh, I am here on Zoom.
Okay, this is for um. Subdivision?
Yes. Okay, um, right now, the current state is. The situation of separating the driveways. And I wanted to let you know my proposed plan for that. Which would be, can you hear me? Oh, hello?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, so for the driveway, I'd like to put a permanent fence across the driveway to make a. Permanent solution of the driveways being separated. Between my ha- my property and the neighbor.
You went to the zoning board for some variance on existence.
Uh. I went to the zoning board for the variance on the corner of the house being four feet over the setback. And they approved that variance last week.
Yeah, a little bit. Um, there's a man off here, I mean.
I'll turn some.
I can hear you. Um. Twenty eight, so, I just found it in the drop box. And so, um. The shared driveway should clearly be shown on the map.
Was that shared? Right, the driveway is not shared.
Huh? What was that? The driveway is currently still. Together, and I would have to get a building permit and order to add the fence to it to make it separated.
Okay.
And I want to make sure that is acceptable before I go through the process of getting the building permit.
Note on the plan. Went into the driveway on the other property. Saying to be abandoned.
So they're saying to abandon the driveway on, um. On my, on the six and a half parcel, six and a half acre parcel. Because it's attached with the property to the right of that. And I don't want to abandon that whole driveway just when I can put a fence across it. And have that as a.
Note that is on the plan. Points to the part of the driveway that is on. Their neighbors.
Yeah, so I have to remove the. Note that states that this portion of the driveway has been abandoned from the neighbor's side. That'll be removed.
Abandoned there.
Hmm?
You don't have the right to abandon there.
Well, yeah, yeah, originally, that was something we came up with, and now it came back that I can't put that there. But I will put, I will connect the fence to the fence that they have on the property line and run that straight up to across the driveway. And then that will be the clear separation of the driveways.
So the chicken and the egg situation, because. We sign the map. And you don't do it, we have no.
Well, I will do, I will do it before the map is signed. I just want to make sure that that's an acceptable solution before I go through and speak with Ed about getting the building permit to put the fence up. And then I'll have the fence up. Before. Anything is done, that way the surveyor can mark on the map as well that there was the fence there.
I don't know about that.
Yeah. As I did not recommend that for other barrier, because it is still a shared driveway.
But how would it be a shared driveway if there's a permanent fence?
It was a little tail that came off what you saw. So he blocks that. It's not a shared driveway, it's a piece of driveway that goes to nowhere.
Exactly.
You understand? Somebody sharing it, somebody more of an adverse possession situation where somebody. Decided to use the neighbor's property for their ingress and egress, which. Is the reason for preventing it, so it doesn't cause legal problems later. I don't, I don't see an issue with that.
So that's an acceptable solution to go forward with, getting the building permit. And. Putting the fence up, and then we'll move forward from there.
Okay.
You don't have a fence, you think you have, but you don't.
Uh, it'd be a wooden fence, a four by four post and wooden, the neighbor currently has like a six foot fence upside, either go four foot or six foot. Whatever the. I am allowed to do on the road front. I'll have to see what's. Acceptable, see what Ed says.
Stockade fence or a post and rail?
It'd be a stockade, but like, uh. Privacy fence in a way, like solid fence. Like dog ear fence roughly. Like, either four feet or six feet tall.
Post, the side yard, front yard situation, so we got to check the post.
Yeah, I'll have to check with Ed to see if I'm, if I can do, if it's only four feet allowed up there, or if it's six feet allowed up there.
Ray, do you have anything else on it that we should do?
Um, so there is a public hearing that's open currently. On this, and. The planning board also declared their intent to be lead agency. I don't know what the planning board would like to do with. Either of those, but.
Well, I'm gonna leave everything open until we see a fence in place and it's shown on the survey in the box, the flat, so that we're signing what we. Know we're signing. So I'm gonna keep it open. We'll close it at the appropriate time and do the rest of our. Due diligence to approve this application. I would just check with Ed, make sure the height and the location is acceptable. Go, go up, get a permit, right?
Yeah, you have to get a permit.
And then you have to have something on the plan that says that that was the best, you got the variance, so.
You have a variance for this, for the setback, and. He shows the fence and the location that he installed. Okay, is that understood?
Yeah, I understand.
And that's where, that's where we stand at the moment, is the variance for the setback, put on the flat as a note, and then have the surveyor show that there's a wooden fence on the. Property line there. Once the fence is done.
Only part of the. Last baseline. Then there's. You're coming out of the driveway, you can't see to the side.
Yeah, so we'll make sure, I'll talk, Ed will let me know what's that, what, how tall the fence can be.
Alright, um, we'll see when we get all the done, we'll come back and we'll finish it up.
Alright, sounds good, thank you very much.
Nice.
Alright.
Hey, Warner Brothers pictures, is there any, you're Warner Brothers.
Um, so we are requesting some film for two days, uh, May fourteenth and May fifteenth. Um, one location, uh, we have a Tuesday and a Wednesday. Um, we're filming in upstate New York for about a week. We're working with the Hudson Valley Film Commission, um, and we have contact with Columbia County Tourism as well, who is assisting us. Um, on Tuesday, we'd want to film on Crest Lane, it's eighty nine Crest Lane, it's a private property. Um, on that road, we're gonna want to have a vehicle driving on the private property. Um, it's a nineteen thirties police car, Jacob can tell you about the, the movie we're doing.
Yeah, we're doing a nineteen thirties film, uh, we started filming this week in New York City, um, we're filming for fifty three days. Uh, we've been in production for about six months. Um. And, uh, we're coming up here to portray, you know, not roads up in this area, just like country roads and. The Midwest, because the movie plotline is a film noir love story of people kind of running through. The country, um, and, uh. You know. It was tough to, we scouted for four months for. Roads that could look like nineteen thirties, um. Roads towards chase scenes and stuff like that, so I had actually. On Crest Lane, I stayed at the property where, like, six years ago, I stayed at the property. Um, because my friend lives down the road. And I remembered it from then, came up and scouted it, and, uh. And it works perfectly for our filming.
It's gonna go on in the street.
Yeah.
Uh, the street's pretty minimal activity there, uh, the, our vehicles will access, uh. The property at eighty nine Crest Lane, um.
But no vehicles will be on the public road. Um, we are speaking with the sheriff, um, Columbia County Sheriff, and this, yeah. And the state troopers, and so we're gonna work, uh, Columbia County Sheriff, so they get back to us next week. On personnel and who wants to kind of take control, and the state troopers are also involved, whoever wants to kind of have their personnel there. Um, we'll have intermittent traffic control, which is held just for when any of the scenes are going on, we're also working with the neighbors. Before and after, so they're aware of our filming, um, they'll get kind of, you know, participation, whether. Um, we have a vehicle parked in their driveway or some kind of cooperation with the filming.
Well, the, we'll be on private.
Yep, all the setups on private.
Driving on the road.
Exactly.
Uh, well, the.
Flare or whatever.
Just for day, just for day one, there is one request for.
The driving on the road for Crest Lane, the, the activity that we want to hold on Crest Lane is just. You know, we'll, the camera will be up in the field looking backwards the road, and we just want to minimize like a. A vehicle coming down, you know, and what we would do, we would, uh, share letters, um, we've been in contact with most, but we would share letters, uh. With our contact information, you know, at your all approval, we can, I think we shared one in here, just notifying people, uh. You know what's happening, giving them our information, you know, just so, uh. You know, if there is any. Any questions, you know, they could ask anytime there's an emergency, um, all, all filming halts on, on our end, so if there's a vehicle that. Fired a truck, ambulance, anything that has to, you know, get through for, for the, while we're filming. All of our filming halts, and we, you know, make sure that everything's clear, so everything can get through, and that's standard protocol. You know, wherever we're at, it's, for us, it's safety first.
These are local roads?
Yeah.
They're both, they're both locals.
Yeah.
Um. I gotta know, he has said the application's complete, I don't know, I think complete, Jay, or not, um, so that's the determination that the planning board. Needs to make.
Some question, what, what hours are you fighting to shoot?
Yeah, so for Crest Lane, uh, just to give you a little bit more detail, Crest Lane is on both days. Um, it's all daylight dependent there, so I would say, you know, anywhere from like. Seven AM till eight PM, and it won't go that long, but just to give you a, a range again, we'll, we'll make sure everyone is aware as we get closer.
Actually overnight.
No, no, we always, we always plan worst, kind of worst case scenario, in case camera breaks or something like that, but all our filming is daytime.
Yeah.
And it would be dusk at the other property that we're requesting, um, but not nighttime.
Yep. Um, and Crest Lane, the scene, just so you guys are all aware, um, is, uh, it nineteen thirties, as he discussed, police cars, um. And they are following a vehicle, uh, it's, the movie is written by Maggie Gyllenhaal, and it's the Bride of Frankenstein, so they're following them, they pull them over. Um, and kind of this, uh, fake gunfight ensues, obviously, we'll have an armor and a police on site. Um, especially because of what's taken place in the last few years, um, everything is checked, these are nineteen thirties revolvers that. Uh, will be plugged, they're not, you know, it may sound an ambient like a.
Yeah.
No, exactly, exactly, and we're very.
It's all, we call it a New York, uh, load, it's all, we're approved to use them in the city, um, and it's just like, you know. Something like that, but it gives the illusion to the camera that.
We're playing.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. Um, and then just to tell you, on Neivers Road, that one is a public road, um, so did want to make you aware, that's the second deck.
They public, is it county? I'm just trying to say, do you know these roads are public, I mean, county or? Down low.
It's a press town. I think, is it county? I would say it's a town, it's right around, it's between East Main and the Breeze, yeah, I think it's a town, I think it just comes out right by the end of.
Alright, so the town. Then why do you think this needs to seek what determination?
Well, that's part of a special use permit.
I, I think when we approached, um.
Just in action, I would think.
Yeah, I think we, the town has not gone through this process often, and we spoke with Hudson Valley Film Commission. They'd love to work with you all on a, on a process for the future, if that's something of interest.
We filled out as much as we can.
Yeah, obviously, it's not your normal approvals.
Yeah.
We didn't want to miss anything, but obviously, this is not exactly what you, you know, go through approvals for, so.
With our schedule, we're. With the dates that we're looking for, um, we're in a extreme time crunch, because we only have the talent for a certain timeframe. So we wanted to fill out.
And especially.
So. Yeah. So it's, is the.
They said.
Everything I do doesn't describe to us about like what's gonna be happening since it isn't out here. No.
Oh, that's.
I'm just looking for the description that is written like.
The, yeah, the addendum is, is kind of gives you the outline of the scenes, um, exactly, you know, the specific requests, if that makes sense. As the permits didn't have.
So that one, and so. Yeah, well, this one is, uh. Live this room, we did that one.
Oh, so if you look at Neivers, is it okay to come up?
Yes, please. Look here, I'm nine of them, it's kind of, uh, what we. Okay, so that's, yeah, that's what I was, which need to. That's what I'm looking at, yeah, so, um.
Jay, does this need a building permit?
Also, you're looking for a full month of May. And you.
So when we spoke with Jay, uh, they advised it's best to kind of cover us, we, like, like Jacob said. We have Christian Bale, Melthe Cruz, and a few others in this, it's, I would say, very unlikely, ninety nine percent that we'd ever change dates. Um, but to safeguard ourselves, we were, were advised to put it in the permit request.
And we, we would know that any date that we would look to switch it to, we'd advise, you know, we'd come in and. You know, make sure.
You only have one shot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
There is or it isn't.
Yeah.
Then we will not be switching.
Yeah, yeah.
Get it if a trainer or something, that maybe it could be a day or two.
Well, as I said, the permit is for the request of consent for the. For two months, so this way, you have that flexibility, you would have to coordinate the, all the police and the sheriff and then.
Yeah, and we're okay with the change in weather, uh, most of the times they can, you know, edit that in special effects or kind of work it into the scene, so it's not.
I'm really concerned, is there any kind of insurance requirement we should be asking for?
Uh, we issued, yeah, so it's. And just so, yeah, it does expire on May first, everyone is quite aware at Warner Brothers, so the minute it triggers, our insurance will release it to everyone, as in.
Vehicle general liability.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
Workers count.
The other, the question still was, Jay, is there a building permit required for this?
Um, Ed has them applied for and operated.
Okay, so he'll collect the necessary fees.
Um, those have been.
Believe he already has.
Yeah.
Um, if he's gotten you.
Well, I believe so, yeah.
Yes, they'll, they'll have been submitted.
So, Jerry, these are paid for the planning board, with the exception of reversibles.
Okay.
And they. Paid as fees.
Alright, so we should make a motion to the, the intent to be lead agency.
Make a motion for lead agency.
Second.
Favor. That's for both. That's the.
Okay.
That's for both. And then, um. We'll set a public hearing for May second.
Okay.
So we get as much as, you know, what you can get is from the police and they've got it all documented, so that we can do this from step and use it all.
Would, would you like us to notify the neighbors via letter, um. Before the public meeting, just of our intention of filming or wait till after?
Is there no mailings for the? Oh, special permit?
Yep.
Okay, so. We have to do legal mailings with a special permit, so, I don't know, is it okay to slip something in to say what's going on at the same time?
Um. I wouldn't recommend that without it being clear, um. Because the mailing. For the public hearing is an official notice.
Okay, so he'll give you the list.
Great.
Who we're mailing, okay, or Jack? He'll give them a list of who we're mailing to, and they can just mail also to the same people.
And I was referring just to the, the properties on Crest, and we've been in touch with Neivers, but just the. There's a couple of properties within five hundred feet, more so talking about just those directly, not filled. The overall.
Mark for you to do it, you can do, give you the list, the names and the addresses.
Right.
You can do whatever you want.
Thank you.
So, there's no broken building?
No.
You'd say what?
Yeah, we're.
The permit application for it, like, uh, it's definitely, but it's not like it's temporary, but. You're right, they go there, and then they're driving on the road.
Yeah. Yeah, it's an existing road on the farm, we're not adding anything to it.
But we're very excited to.
Um, I have some points, so the planning board feels that the application is.
Go for this.
Okay. I, I.
Yeah, you have to really.
There are special application in here.
You went through it, Jay? And what's, did you think it was a claim? Uh, yes, uh, we. Uh, yes, uh, we. You mean for what, the other one is a speech?
Yeah, we're not building anything, draining anything, subdividing anything, we're just.
Yeah, it's all existing, like nothing.
Yes, it'll be very neat to see on screen, so.
Right, so the special use permit is about safety and, you know, like there's not twenty cars parked on the side of the road and that.
Yes.
And you're not doing any of those.
And we're gonna work with local person, you know, the construction company up the road that parks some vehicles, so everything will be off the road, everything will be coordinated and. Again, that's all in the.
Just get, get us proof, you notify the sheriff and the state police and what they're, they may wanna give viewers later.
Yep.
Yeah, we.
All kinds of money.
No, and.
We have, we have a company in line for that as well and, and fine. That's.
Yeah, we, we in filming in, cause we're filming in, you know, four different counties up here. Five different towns, um, we usually require on our end, we just like having. You know, sheriff's office or, you know, local police department or, you know. Just cause it kind of puts people at ease, so we, it's always something that we budget when we're working on a budget from the get go, so. That's all stuff we would, we would require if they can, uh. You know, allow us to have them is at least two, you know, one person on each end, uh, for sheriff's office. Um, at each location, so then it's just, you know. It's all about safety, yeah.
Just give us proof that you did it and what, what you're going to do.
Cool.
Yep.
Anything else, Jay?
Um. Was there a motion to set the public hearing?
I, I, I said, may second, we have a motion to set the public hearing.
A motion to set the public hearing for Warner Brothers, go for three seconds.
Second.
You all in favor?
I.
All right.
Thank you. We'll see you on the second.
See you again tonight. Good luck with the evening.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next. All young, all the youngs.
Oh, yeah.
Are you young?
Yeah.
This is young. All right.
Um. Um. So they had two applications.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought you said twice, right?
I'm gonna do a double, cover both.
Is the second application complete?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to declare your intent to be lead agency.
Motion, motion to take lead agency.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
And then set the public hearing for May second. Or around seven oh five PM.
Uh, motion to set the public hearing for Warner Brothers on the second, uh, seven oh five PM, so.
Adder around, adder now, seven and five PM.
Around, but I can't write, around seven oh five PM.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I'm.
Second on that, Aaron.
Yes, second.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now. It's young.
Uh, it's actually more young, Shinisler, it's not young. And it said in regards to the all the property, um, this is Walter, my architect, I think you'll have a little bit more information there. I'm gonna allow him to speak.
Okay.
Hopefully it's gonna do a lot of.
This is the plan.
You have.
This is the plan. What's that one about?
So, um, there's currently a family farm and, um, uh. It's, the request is to subdivide, uh, from one lot to two lots to make this lot that you have before you, which is. This point nine acres and this is gonna be Mariana's home, so she's gonna live next to her family home.
So why is this other lot shown on here? There's lot, there's parcel one A and one B.
Cause we're creating two lots out of one lot, so we're showing both lots.
But that's what's like.
This is part of the remainder, right? This remains with.
So this is, this is two lots and this new one is within.
Part of this, yes.
So that's, I was wondering what is?
That's under the same ownership, but it's a, it's.
Cause they got a different number in the.
It's a lot, so I think. Jay, you haven't known the answer to this question? Do you know what they're asking? There are two parcels here of the original parcel before we subdivided.
So parcel A and B compiled from deeds and math, that do not constitute a boundary. I don't know.
If I look at this, this has nothing to do with what we're doing. Usually is the two arrows across the road is the children.
Right, but they added that up as the total that's been subdivided. So maybe it's, yeah. So, yeah, is this its second parcel or are?
So again, I would have said it's one parcel, this is the family farm and the subdivision.
Right, so here's the, um. Like the book cover and. So. A little confusing, I think, instead of the body.
Your surveyor's gotta tell us if this is attached to this as one lot. You're gonna come back, so no question, you're gonna find out, usually there's a line across here with arrow of the. It doesn't say anything about.
Parcel one on one, you can probably deduce and match to the weapon and do not constitute a damage statement, that's. Good. So, um, I guess the answer is that they're going both. And you're saying that maybe we just come back with this and just.
If that is the fact, how is that? If that's the fact, you're thinking that and admitted, the condition is a separate block that has nothing to do with anything.
Well, it does stay that way, I mean, right, it's okay.
They're really only dividing for one lot.
Right. And then you're only subdivided to ten point one six two acres, not sixteen acres.
That, that, you know, yeah.
Yeah, sixteen acreage is one, the sixteen acreage.
That's what you're asking, so it turns on.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, it is one lot.
Sixteen acres, yeah.
The survey.
So why is it? I guess because it's separated by the road, they.
Yeah, well, not uncommon, but they still put it in the cage that they're.
Yeah, Crest Lane runs right between, first my mom calls, they're both.
Okay, so we can.
Add one lot of value to the parcels.
But I can clarify that.
Yeah, um.
On the, I guess this is the surveyor's, what's gonna become the plot? Yes, this will be the plot for this law. He's gonna have to show the remains of your lot that's left, it's not completely shown, he's gotta show. The rest of this lot once you cut this out, so we know what's left. And this would all be one lot.
Right, because it's, this actually then it becomes a new lot also, because that, but there's ton out of it, so it's. Have to show the whole.
Then we know what this is, the third thing here, is it a pond, is it an island, what is it?
I.
There is a pond on it.
No, that's not a pond, um, this is right by the front. Got a little note on it, honestly, I had another reaction, see, I noticed that before. Um, I'm not sure what that is.
But the other thing then, you're forgetting, so this becomes a different lot and they're gonna share the driveway.
Is that?
No, we're not sharing, sharing the drive.
Not sharing the drive.
No.
This shows that it would be.
It just like the full lines of.
Right, um, they have proposed that the driveway would be a shared driveway, they talked to their insurance. And moved away from that one. So that is another thing that will have to be shown, um, to move the application forward. I advise the applicant that they would also need the curb cut.
Okay, I have a question. Um, I understand the idea is separated, is it possible that they create a. Common, uh, drive with the current curb cut and then split it? As opposed to having a new curb cut off of Crest Lane, see what I'm asking?
I'm only, I think with the, with the insurance advice, they're not to do.
Or they don't want that.
Do it's that, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
You, um, did you have a chance to reach out?
I did, I was seeing.
Okay, so then that would have to be the driveway location would have to reflect where the permit was granted.
So. So, can, will you help us with this list or we're gonna be struggling with?
Yes, I, I do have the list, um. Does the planning board have the checklist?
Yeah. Um.
Is this a, a carport or something here?
Uh, that's actually.
Okay, so if it was a structure, it would be a variance, I couldn't, I didn't know. Yeah, twelve thirteen twenty three.
You wanna go through that checklist now, Jay?
I think it would be beneficial to the board.
This is the, uh, planning board, uh, that was starting with the patient side, this is.
It says that the title says subdivision slash checklist.
Well, I have my full set of them in the checklist.
That's the one we. You referred to.
That's, that's a, um. I own two one checklist on her list of. Like.
Did that have the drop off?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, for subdivision?
More C subdivision flat checklist.
Oh, I did not scroll down enough, I'm sorry.
Another model checklist in that.
Okay. That doesn't sketch, but that was. We just read through the document?
Um, yeah, the location of that portion, which is to be subdivided in relation to the entire track. So that's.
Showing the entire track.
And then the whole thing. Um.
Name of the owner of the property.
Yeah, so they do have the. Don't even notice.
No, it does. He has the, he's showing the adjacent to the.
No, I'm just.
No, but on the application, he put all the same, that's one.
Oh, okay, on the application.
Yeah. You can't have the adjacent property owners being the property owner, it has to go from the. Original property line to the adjacent owner, not from the newly created lot. Cause you're surrounding it, so it's all the same.
They're all on this plan.
Right.
Right here already, so they just.
Yeah, and we also had, so that it's something, Jay, I don't know if they got it, it shows all the owners, you know, that we have data map, which shows all the adjacent properties. I mean, I guess you're saying it has to be on the survey?
Excuse me?
It has to be on the survey?
Okay, it is on the survey, it, on the application, you have the. You have Peter and all, we have adjacent property owner, all the property.
Okay, so I just look at the survey.
Right, you have to go from the corner of the original lot, not from the lot you created.
Uh, tax map, she's lost a lot of this.
That's on the parcel.
Yeah.
One B.
They have a barrel max scale, the address of record owner of, uh, subdivision.
Yeah, surveyor's name.
Oh, we have the. Uh, location of property lines, all existing structures, physical features such as the area of stream, stream buffers, pools, floodplains, other significant physical features. Within a portion to be subdivided and within two hundred feet thereof. Contour, contour should also be indicated in intervals, but not over ten feet, contour data, there is sets permission and all these. You have to give variety, um.
So, you know, there are weapons.
Yeah.
Right, and so there, the pond is not shown. Portion of the pond is on the lot, the big lot, that's getting subdivided, a small portion of that, then there's a stream. Um, which is shown, a portion of it is shown. And then there's another big, there's like wooded wetland area that's shown on the, um. On the Hudson Valley Resource Network, um.
It's not on the survey?
No, the pond is not shown, it says approximate wetland buffer, but it. And then it says approximate wetland, um. Also, maybe this.
Is it turning the weapon?
This line is showing that.
You know, it disappeared over here.
And then it's a hundred, right, so we need to see that. Not seeing the buffer.
No, also, I understand it's definitely there, you go two hundred feet out to the property down there.
Or.
Uh, to show, uh.
The what's outside, within two hundred feet.
Look, it says, um. Uh, pools, floodplains, similar physical features, within a portion to be subdivided and within two hundred feet thereof.
Yeah.
Right, so I think it's, you have to go two hundred feet out from the property down there.
To show those features, so, and also I don't know how to speak this, most of it. If this is a steep slope in here, um. I can't read the numbers.
They ran together.
Yeah, so a lot of information that is shown on here needs to be extended for the whole property. And, um, and so what it's asking for is also like if these wetlands are. Within two hundred feet of your, the property line, they should be shown.
Well, are you able to share the checklist?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, available, right? I mean.
I think they've got.
I mean, yeah, you know, I.
I went through it at once with Walter and, um. This is an incomplete application, there are, um, things that are needed, so I will go through with the applicant. Again, um, but I wanted the planning board to also go through it because that was. That happened, that was, it exists.
So it's, um, it also needs a. To call out the farms. Up against a farm, we need to show that as well.
You said this is a family farm.
It's not an active farm.
Not an?
No.
But if you're right near an active farm, yes, yeah.
So that's the, I disclosure. The septic testing that was done, was it done in, um, front of that county health department?
Yes, um, I, Maggie came up and then all the testing and the purchase and everything.
So you had a ladder from them?
I do.
Okay, I'm gonna need that.
So. What is this X on the plan in front of the house?
Sorry, I asked the question.
I know, that was supposed to come up, I'm so sorry, that's like a little kitchen garden. That was supposed to come off the survey.
And then I'm not sure the show's, the narrative's going away.
Yeah.
We trying to do abbreviated site plan. We trying to do abbreviated site plan and subdivision at the same time.
That would be nice.
It's a different set of. Yeah, they don't need to.
Doesn't seem right, I mean, that we can approve it, so this.
Yeah, we just put this up to them. I guess they better move forward with their stuff.
That would be ideal, that would.
I don't know, any reason Joe, we can't do it, gather and then approve one and then the other?
Um, that would be a better question for John, I think.
Okay. Cause it looks like you're going in that direction. And I don't know anything else for that.
Um, so the last thing is that the soils aren't placed on the map. Still.
Farm soils or the.
Yeah.
Farm soils.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't looked at it, I guess, on that. And then the last thing is that an actual field survey is required.
Right, this one was not, but I can.
You wanna skip the little site visit?
Um.
What's um, what's your process?
I do the four.
Um, for that, the planning board.
Um, you would have to be after the eighteenth. You would have to be after the eighteenth of this month. Going away and so.
Okay. We usually schedule a couple of times and the the board goes out in two groups, so.
Okay.
Can you schedule that, Ken, I'm concerned?
Yep. And um, and you get the surveyor to the email change of that. And I'll be available tomorrow, Monday. But just checking with me, so.
My apologies, I see the machine.
Once the driveway. Change. Yeah, probably over here also, right back, changing the whole lines as a result. And. We will also. Out the site plan.
You know, it's anyway, buddy. You know.
That's from Rick. Um, so you will be making sure that we get a complete application.
Yep.
For whenever they're ready.
And as per my conversation with you and Joe, it wasn't a complete application.
For tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. That's a um preliminary for you.
Yep.
See, I knew it.
There's anything?
That what? Oh.
But we got that. Well, I was doing, I learned that too.
Great help, straight up like.
Yeah. Yeah, the chariot.
It's the next time. Also. So.
They're finishing up. I checked.
So am I. They're still working.
Working up, but.
You're lying here, so that's three. I offer. We some of the pictures we done.
So just say Jay will work with them to get a complete application.
Okay.
And get them to do that. This was just a. Yeah, and I think that basically what they're doing. Looks fine. Yeah. And then, the whole thing about the smaller lot. Approved being, a smaller lot, I think, is great, it's near the road, it's not a wide way, it's all the.
Yeah. Oh. Okay, we have one more. Free application, um, nicer. That you? No. Tell us what your.
This is my client, consider her dear.
Uh.
Your what?
My client.
Your client.
From San Diego. Uh, he uh, was trying to. Jake Eastwood, I'm a professional engineer.
Okay.
Um, I was hired buying uh, a property on Hall Hill Road. That was from, yeah, that's a fellow student, might remember him, passed away, his family, but uh.
Finding some of the property, yeah.
Uh.
We're getting there.
Yeah. And also wound up purchasing it, uh, so there was some work done on the property before he purchased it. Uh, but he received a stop work order for doing some excavation and tree work, uh, trying to figure out where to put a house, talking about a single family residence. Uh, two story, three bedroom. Uh, and upon receiving a stop work order, which was uh, last September. Um, uh, he hired me, and so the first step was to go apply for a building permit.
Um, you have any drawings, maps, anything?
I do.
Okay.
I brought some extra copies up. I did, not always.
I've been talking about, you know.
It's part of.
Age right now.
Part of why I came from here is because it was difficult being that's a community. Whether I should go to zone or the hills, or the planning boards.
Yeah.
Uh, but. What he started with the fire event. And. What we're talking about is.
You got that thing?
Yeah. Three copies, I I supplied seven copies to the general speaker.
Thank you. Maybe tonight.
So a building permit was filed in November, if the patient would be denied, so you go, there are. Uh, the variants that would be requested. Now, before the planning board, because there were some discrepancies, whether or not here first or or them first, or do I, uh, the.
My opinion, that's.
Okay, sure. So what was begun here is an excavation of a pit. The driveway had already existed. And uh, it proposed well, over set the area and so on, but the one hundred and fifty foot offset to this pond and to the left of the process speed. Um, would be a variant for request, it would be set down to the state P C one at two hundred feet. And in a nutshell, that's basically a single thing residence where work was started without permission. Uh, and now returning to background, right, but. That's it, this is not.
I think this is to be approved by the bus, not the zoning, based on the code.
Okay.
I found something in the code.
Thank you.
Uh, I had a discussion with somebody. Um, he's going to page, say, he remembers.
You're sending the. He's working, you know.
They already have a, they have the foundations or.
No, it's just a.
It's not, you don't wanna, try and avoid having to move this outside of the buffer.
Uh, correct, I mean, this is where the house, where they wanted to put the house, so that's where they started looking. Uh, it also um, makes some decent sense that the subject says, goes there, moving up this way gets you a lot more expense and. Personally, go down much.
So this. We, I'm sorry.
And uh, then I'm concerned about moving the well back, this far, because you have. Get up to it. Uh, and then that's just that many more deep you gotta go down.
Well, it's an abbreviated site plan.
It's always.
Right.
Right, doesn't have to bother the zoning.
No, that's not.
That's good.
Very good. Sorry, I'm gonna mention this.
So I would have John or Kim make interpretations of his own.
Okay, well, I'm I'm gonna just. Don't listen, you can come back in here.
Well, if they are to go to add for a building permit. The wetland would trigger this to come to us and then reviewed it, so I prefer you.
The, my current understanding of the process and the law is that the wetland encroachment is requires an area variance because it's a bulk requirement?
Yeah, fine. Pointed out the second.
You know, I.
You remember the page, told that I.
And so he gets the N W I is now requested based on the Supreme Court ruling next year. There was a Supreme Court ruling about what the EPA and US Army Corps can consider a weapon. And it drastically reduces the uh, the amount of.
Size.
No, the amount of weapons that the uh, Army Corps actually has for you. So. More for the point of New York State D E C, the government's at, and they're more strict than the Army Corps, I think. So it's a definitely a New York D E C weapon.
So the wetland across the street, what about the pond?
That pond is an artificial pond, it's part of, it's not a registered weapon, but standing water. Uh, this. If you go on a feature on this, it's a property. Probably for buyer writing insurance or having such, I should note, it's just a pond. But the zone, your zone, it says, you know, hundred fifty feet of sand water, hundred fifty feet of water, and uh. Just a one piece. From that.
But this is section with you, so we bring that way.
Um, I. Thought that.
On that. This. Wouldn't count. On the page of the um. Whole section that says when the hundred and fifty foot buffer makes the lot unbuildable. Yes, planning to learn the way of that, we know what that is.
Um. Missed that. Yeah. It's maybe that, yes. There's screen but.
Yeah, so you know.
The buffer is uh, unstructured, but it's screening buffer. Um. Wait, 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 wait. So that's waiver for that, then.
We just trying to. I think there's a.
Paper, so.
Maybe one. Maybe nine.
Yeah, um. Now that's interesting with this here, but then refer to there, that's a look around that one. I am aware of that, but I have to. Having a waiver to that one against somewhere, I don't think we should not have a site by. Yeah. Something like that. Waivers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to do a search, please.
On the um.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we did have John here. No, that can ask him, no, it's.
Um, the last, the last statement I got of from John and Dan, especially of this EPA person, one of them. The ones that.
Yeah. Go to.
I start, I read.
And if I do. Here, technically. And why authority waiver all sites to seventeen? That's.
Wait for thirty.
That gives a.
Plenty more ways of fixing all start files. Two seventeen. Yeah.
Yeah. But this is unbuildable, if they move the house.
They can't leave the driving.
Nobody can move the house. And the subject, and it's, it's way up the hill, it's all wooded, this is all what is.
Further back, it is.
Where's that line of woodland?
Uh, about where um, the existing gravel driveway ends, a little more further south, towards the road than that, but let's say.
Driveway, that's the problem.
The halfway property.
Well, it's everything. Like the leach field, the house. Everything is, like, half of the house is in there. And the whole, this is the whole leach field, proposed leach field down here.
Yeah, I've done, I I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna go through septic design unless we know where to build it, but uh, I definitely looked up square footage, and there's nothing to put a system there, sure. And so that's the proposed primary measure.
Wow. But the other thing I would want is to look at the pond and see, like we discussed, the, the, you know, the ecological significance.
Sure.
And. Uh.
Very visible from the road, you know.
But.
No matter what you do, the existing driveway is in the box.
Yeah, kind of with that. And and the curb cut was permitted and then uh, standing before uh, turning over the property. Extended us to about the outside. Uh, and and my client moved it a little further. But uh, yeah, the driveway is. Unavoidable.
The number, what is number, does it location that helps the number?
Uh, there's not a physical address, no, just a the tax map ID.
This is proposed primary.
What if you have onsite waste? Waste water, it's a second.
If we were looking at this without having a foundation. Or if you know.
There's no foundation, it's a home.
Yeah, just a little excavator. Excavate.
So, so, yeah, all right, so then if we were just looking at from that perspective, where would we say the house should be?
Out of that area.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the the house should be moved back.
Yeah.
The house will be easy for, the driveway.
Well, I think the driveway, I mean, you you have to, what, switch it to the other side of the lot?
I think you still have a wetland problem on the other side, because there's another wetland.
You know, you got this buffer and this.
I think that one is. I have to ask Mr. Turning, John. This applies. And. About a hundred and fifty foot stream buffer standard renders the lot unbuildable due to the size of the car flows, configuration, top topography, the planning board shall have the authority to alter the hundred and fifty. Streams buffer. Streams buffer. That.
No. And I'd have to take, I'd have to take a look at it.
I don't think they show up on here.
Hmm.
Time that it will show up on here.
Uh, it's a question of whether we can waive the setback or you gotta go.
For the hundred and fifty.
This is in the subdivision or the zoning law?
The zoning law. Page two seventeen. I mean, you got a problem to move the household, move the house, add a wetland back there. You know, let's dig another hole, put the dirt.
I'd love to see this site.
I mean. Do you wanna go on the house itself, unbuildable? No, it's, it's not, it can be moved, but if we're talking about economic hardship and a lot of difficulty, so.
You can start it.
Yeah.
Well, there's that, but yeah.
Well, we didn't start it, it was the previous owner. We purchased the property, we were under the impression the property was right to be built, because there was already a hole, there was already a machine, there was already everything. And then we ran into this problem when we came to get the building firm. So. I don't understand how we got that far. And now we're stuck doing all this, you know what I mean?
He didn't get a building permit, I, I understand where you come from. If you know, day of the week, but it's. It's the present owner's responsibility to fix the method, just the way it works.
So the request is.
Uh, but the exception to the hundred and fifty foot, we want to stay in water, I want to second to a hundred.
But the request is to go in this location where you have on the plan.
Where it started, correct.
And. So. Why is this driving goal that would be this thing?
This driveway, this driveway, we extend it.
From about, uh, saying that you're about there and then they go up and you're to start clearing some trees, see where they. You know, what, what they had to do with the property.
Well, I think that if this is coming to us as a abbreviated site plan review, that we must determine it's what, what is it coming to the board for?
It's going to the D E B A for the area there.
Um, so why is he here?
I think I suppose. We're still trying to determine that's an area.
That was, that was not impressed, so. Here.
I, I found that.
So you, you, you do have the authority to waive it, but you've got, you've got to issue a written decision. And you have to. To show that you've considered the criteria that's set forth in the waiver section. And there's specific criteria that's set forth. You know, for the hundred and fifty foot stream buffer, you'd have to go through each one of those and. Include that in your decision.
So if it was a zoning case, what would they do? Not that.
This is a waiver, it's not a variance.
That was my point, doesn't need to go in the zoning, right?
No, it doesn't.
It, unless we say we're not giving a waiver. Then it would close it up.
Oh, a variance is a. A change from the bulk regulations, this is. This section is saying, this is saying that you can change the site plan requirements. And cer- certain requirements in the zoning law, and it can be done by the planning board. You, it's, as I said, it's a waiver of a requirement, not a variance, there's a difference. And, but you have to follow the procedural provisions that are set forth, then there you gotta. Issue a written decision that explains here. Uh. Wait, the reason you decided to waive, and you have to cite the specific criteria in that statute that says that you can, we've considered the following.
So it's.
Yeah, you can do it, you just have to. You know, i- if you're gonna, you're gonna have to issue a written decision before you can vote on.
But it's planning board of course.
Yes.
Yes, it'll help.
Yes, it will.
If there's no other way to get a driveway for the property. Then. I would say you are waiting on the driveway and. Back with.
I think they gotta move that, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to see the site. To make that determination, if this is an environmental question, I think we should. Understand the conditions of the site and say that, if this is steep and forested with big old trees or something, then you're gonna make more impact on the site. And, you know, to build lower down or, might be better, because I actually wanna see what the significance is to the stream. Okay. You know, I mean, things are going down this way, I mean. This shows that there is this. Stream.
You're right, you know, if, if we're trying to.
Yeah, I can see your point about making it worse.
Yeah.
They said they already cleared all that uphill.
Well, I'd like to see.
No, no. We did have a couple trees, because the, 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 the path where the house was, was previously bought, it goes straight uphill.
Yeah, and we don't want. More disturbance on steep slopes if we can avoid it.
The slope seems to be even to.
Well, from here.
Those are the, that's the original grading there before. And we did his work and so on, but you're right.
Well, then we gotta get in.
So this then comes to us as an abbreviated site plan review, yes, okay. So we.
With the need for a waiver.
Right, so we need. All the things for the checklist to be done for abbreviated site plan review, the application. And there's the whole checklist, all the, like, you have most of, like, the natural resources, the slopes, and to go through that checklist and make sure the man. Has everything on it, and then. Uh. And then we kind of need to know what. The houses, you have a plan for the house?
So we're just following exactly what was approved.
So you have to get a permit, you have to have a planning.
Well, that was the thing, we purchased the lot. Being. Ready to build. We have a site plan, I mean, a plan for the house with a specific law.
Okay.
We only found out about. We only found out about this when we went to get a bulletproof.
I understand. Yeah, but we need to see that house.
That you. Yeah, it won't improve by anybody other than. You want a plan with the property.
Yes, it was, it was.
Right, so we did also in this package to come to us.
Well, I know he's gotten our contractual set.
Great.
It's a thirty-one by forty-six, I believe, footprint, two-story house.
Good, and then is that what's drawn on here?
Well, the, the dash lines there is what had been excavated for the foundation.
All right, we just want to see the house, not that.
So the tiny, the painter line inside.
Okay. Okay, that's cool.
You find that, you know, that's a.
Um, but I think, I'd like the idea, I mean, since we're talking about whether, you know, the other issue is, is, is the subject, and. That's me the bigger thing other than, and this is already that disturbance. Um, whether.
I agree.
We go through that process of going through the application all day, and I guess we have to before we can go through the site visit. And look at it, or can we do a site visit?
You can do a site visit at any time.
Let's do a site visit.
Um, do we, uh, request it, we're there for that, or can they just go?
Oh, they could go anytime they want, it's, it's been saying they're for long enough.
Yeah, it's very touch of nerve, yes.
Would it be good to have somebody there in case you have questions while you're on the site visit, and do you need anything staked for the site?
Well. Certainly to see this line. You know, that what we're talking about as far as. You know, we'll see this area disturbance here, right? There's no disturbance yet from this. The leak.
Uh, not since you own the property.
Okay.
Stan, we did some explore for you.
No, no set to setting.
Uh, no. Would you mind having to stake that out, so you can see where it is?
Well, I think that if this line, you think to, to do this line here. Really was shown, I mean, is a property boundaries flagged at all?
Uh, yes. We surveyed it.
So there's a little flag there that we can see where the property is?
Uh, they, uh, the corners and then maybe halfway up, there's. It's, you can see it, you know, it's clear, visually clear, but, you know, more could be flagged, you know, just to make it easier, but, but, yeah, there's, there's state, it's a survey property.
Yeah, with property.
You don't even open around when you want to put this up, I mean, if they didn't do it.
Does that?
I'm suspicious that that could be wet.
Yeah, um, that's, I'm worried about that, too.
So I don't think that's a good location for this. I, I get it.
Doesn't really give a lot of battery.
Well. Can't put it in a pot.
Yeah, understood. No, like.
Unless, unless this location works and. What about how?
He's gonna have a high water table.
Well, what I would figure is a curtain, the curtain drain would be required.
Probably two, three feet of water. If that.
Well, that, that, it's already got holes there, so.
Yeah, the foundation hole has no water, so it's, it's pretty dry.
But what about, you said that there was sort of like.
Oh, it's just. Like, all those trees were gone, scraping was done, I, I wouldn't call it natural soil appraisal, pretest or per test, I mean, I don't think that was actually done.
So there's no per test so far.
Correct.
But. But maybe it.
I think the time is coming for the health department to do it, it's. It doesn't cost anything to get the help.
No, you know. Because we're having, I can go there and, and do some predetermination, it's just.
I like.
I wouldn't necessarily wanna get started on that unless we know.
Well, I don't think you have an application here, I think, they think we need to know what we can do though. Make it sad.
We're gonna try to go back and study. Take the, see the last question that is not clear on the site. You know, if anybody to know. Doing, you know, trying to get a sense. Then let's tell. That's Jay, that coordinate maybe with you, that we were saying that, that. So that we.
Okay, so you say you'll do a cursory drive, I sort of, and then.
Yeah, pulling a block.
But, fine, but what I mean is. And then at that point, you would contact me.
Yeah.
Questions in the comments.
Yeah.
Let me go do it, go.
Yeah. If, if it's not clear.
Yeah.
But, I mean. At what point in the application process for, like, doing the house, can we do the first step?
Um.
Not getting bad thoughts without.
Well, sure, that I know, but. With the software being the starting point.
I think you can add. I think you can give the right.
Okay.
Front of the machine and if otherwise was stuck, the chickens, the end of that.
Okay. Okay. I think the main thing is you've got a route to go around the zone. Okay, that's good. I mean, a, a pathway forward is. What I'm really.
That's what I hear.
One shoulder up there. Okay.
I wanna go on the player.
Uh, you know, this is reading. First years. The EPA application package. I feel there is.
Uh, I found it on the. Oh, okay.
All, all, I'm gonna stick there. So.
Um, I found it on the.
I've been down a place.
Which, I mean. Half, half over the, and I'll go over that in sections, uh, four hundred and five mile to the north of this.
So I think.
Cedar, a little bit over here. You know, the first way we got there.
Let's, let's let John get. On his way, John, what did you?
We're printing, you don't.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't wanna hold you up, but.
No, you're not, you're not.
So it's clear to see right by that.
Yes, just, can you let me know what they got going on me to there in case you have any questions? Because we would like to get going on this, you know.
Um.
Is that.
All right, I'm gonna stop people drive by, but you can't find it, or if I have any questions, I don't know, look at some of the guys. Make a sense of what, uh, that.
This is so you, you know, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I don't want to, how, this got all started, and, you know, I mean, and.
We're. Moving forward.
That question. My bag from showers.
Yeah, we be, but someone is gonna get recycled, don't leave our desk.
Yeah, we should really just need to care.
Wait, are we on break waiting for the?
Resolution should be ready shortly, Jay's printing.
So we're good?
Yeah. Yes, we'll be in that then.
Very good, and now to see. Find out what needs to happen next, I'll, I'll get everything you want as quickly as possible. Yeah.
No, no, that's Jay.
You're not, you're not down, don't, don't share.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We're done. This was.
They. We should read it, right?
Yeah, well, we.
Let's just first decide if it's right, and then. Once everybody reads it. And they understand it, and you got to. Then. You can probably just read the action items for the. Prior to the.
One second.
What?
Need to. Let's answer. All my.
Yes, this is an extra. If we can get one more customer.
I don't, I don't. I'm reading longer. Yeah, that's the part of this.
Anyone? Thanks. There will happen.
Okay.
And I guess.
Yes.
I don't think I see the original voters. Or here. One Bob Rose resigned.
Oh, we just took the names off the website, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So we can make, we can make, that stuff can be corrected by Jay.
Oh, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, those kinds of little corrections can be made after the meeting.
Can we look at the document to have page one or four, two before three, so it's clear. Uh, like the document.
Page one, they would say page one of five, right?
Yes, well, yeah, so this way when you look at, you know, there's always with the four pages.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Yeah, well, we're giving Jay a word copy, so she'll be able to adjust.
Just generally keep somebody from sticking out the page, isn't there?
We usually with sequentially numbered paragraphs, it's hard to make changes like that, we could do that. If you concentrate most on the action items at at the end to make sure that we successfully. Incorporated the additional revision that you want on the map, that's the key. And to make sure that Mitch, that you and Andy are in agreement on that as well.
He won't pay to me.
It's that same. It says so, yeah, okay. Is that your only correction, Mitch?
I have one, uh, number two, yeah, each of that line, I'm not licensed yet.
Okay.
Reach that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He said.
You said yes. So sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
That, that ending. Yay. Or yes.
Good.
Wait, have we got a motion or a second?
You'll have to, wait, let's just make sure we got it, so we have everything, every comment from you guys?
Yeah, well, um, no, just give us one second.
Yeah.
Well, yes. I don't have any conceptual thoughts of it. It's the delay, when are we gonna get the town bills? I'd like to put a deadline on that, because I don't wanna wait a month, two months, three months. You know, I have money, I got it from my car.
Yeah, yeah, I'll try to get the. Man, I can't speak for Eric, but we can get the Grand Delion's bill in next week.
So my my only concern is this makes the final approval contingent on payment. For the escrow bill, I have no problem with that aspect, we've never gotten any of the bills. I know, okay, so I don't want to every week. Call the town and say, I wanna pay you, I wanna pay you. So I I wanna kind of build in something what's fair, because the town should get paid, there's no dispute about that, but I don't wanna be waiting. So how how do we get around that?
I think I have to. We'll refund it, I guess that's the simplest thing to do, I, you know, you'll get it back if we're under.
He's he's concerned about the. I will get, I can say that my firm's bill, we can have into the planning board next week. And I'll reach out to Eric Kiviat tomorrow. And find out how quickly he can get the Hasonia bill to us.
Is there anything outstanding from Dan doing now? I don't know if, um, Dan has submitted.
Dan wrote one letter, so there probably is.
So is it unreasonable to tell your contractors that they have to give you invoices within ten days or else they're waiving?
No, we're not waiting, I mean, just, I need them to get it, I need them to get it to you, again, I have no.
Yeah, we'll get it, yeah.
But. Waiving bills.
Well, I need something so we have an outside, I don't want him to be sitting on. You know, maps for for weeks now that we can't find.
So we we're at loggerheads on the resolution, that's terrible.
John, I'm trying to be reasonable, I I.
I understand what you're saying, I'm not sure that I wanna build something like that into the approval resolution.
Well, what's a fair amount of wait for us, two weeks?
I don't know how long it takes once we, all I can speak to is when I can get my firm's bill in here. I will reach out to Nan, I will reach, that's not my job, but I'll reach out to Nan and I'll reach out to Eric. And I'll ask them to submit their bills as quickly as they can, I can't, but I can't tell you they'll.
And truthfully, you know, if it's if it's a week, week and a half, I mean, that's we're gonna change, it's just, you know, he's gonna, and and obviously if you pass the resolution, it's gonna be immortalized, he knows that he can start to arrange plans and then. You know, if if it's a week and a half before we get the stamp plans, that's not the end of the world, we just ask that it doesn't.
Look, we're happy to be paid, so.
I'm not worried about you, John.
We have our own incentive to do it, and you can see from what we did tonight, that we understand your client's desire to move forward and. We bended to try to help that happen, so.
Appreciate that, very, okay. Thank you, that's good.
And then, Mr. Chair, what's your availability as far as stamping plans, and I think we're not gonna get up on that.
Yeah, so we get a minute, if you get in here, I'll get my butt here, and then I'll post that square.
Yes, we made that, and we made the.
On the other side of the fence, okay.
And we read them.
Right.
You read them.
We didn't read them, Tom wanted the age numbers instead of saying one, two, three, one of five or whatever the total is, two of five, et cetera, so that's how we. Add it to the number.
We'll get the, we'll get Dan to revise maps as soon as we can, and now it was delivered.
What's that? My kid here.
Yes, yes, yes.
Raise seal, raise seal, Dan the man.
Yes, so you need a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
For the, for the, but you got it here.
For the resolution. If you wanna lead by just reading the action items, okay?
Need a, need a motion, the resolution, town and planning board, the matter of the Green Hill. Farm subdivision stated before, twenty twenty-four. And filing. Items. Um, just abbreviating some as much as I can, they're written in the resolution. Down as only one minimum twenty-five feet of undisturbed vegetation buffer along the streams from seeds and burial pools. Map note thirteen shall be revised to state, down of Anquan zone, so. Any parcel is a property of the farm as far as abbreviated site plan. The three proposed culvert on lot two on the survey to be revised and removed, granting the final subdivision of public expressly. Firstly, to, you know, contingent, contingent on the avenue for payment to the town of Anquan for fees. Granting a final subdivision does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits. And the planning board's final approval. An endorsement for the plan will be filed by the subdivision of the public accounting for its office in sixty states. Can I get a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to approve the resolution for the Green Hill Farm Subdivision as stated.
Second.
All in favor? But I.
There you go.
It's that Tommy, why is that doing?
I don't know.
You have to, you have to turn turn off the Groucho Marx effect button.
Thank you, thank you very much, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. We got a motion, anything else, Jay?
Did everyone have a chance for another? February first, twenty four.
I was not there, I was absent for the, no, I didn't, sorry, I could do that. Yeah, we got the last, we missed. We're gonna do it at the end and then we forgot. Uh, but I can't vote on it anyway. Right?
Yeah, we can't vote, we're only a few people.
Right. Right. Okay. Yeah. So we just make a motion to re-adjourn?
No, we're going to.
We're ready to adjourn, I make a motion to adjourn.
We've just got to go.
Hi.
Hi. So you're still in? What you expect?
Yeah, very much so.